Test one, two. Test one, two. Test one, two. Is ready? Good evening. We'll call to order the city council meeting for Monday, January 20th, 2025. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the rich and wealthy who stands one nation, together in the presence of liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Amanda.
Shannon Derby.
Yeah.
Bill Leclerc. Doug Brand.
Yes.
Tim Petrie.
Sure.
Bonnie Shimalunas.
Yeah.
Scott Steckmesser.
Here.
Adam Husky.
Here.
Darla Leclerc.
Here.
Mark Bitner.
Here.
Okay, since we have two people that are remote, we'll do, we have a number four tonight. A consideration of any council member request to participate in this meeting from a remote location. Obviously, we have Mark Bitner and Bill Leclerc that are remote tonight. So looking for a motion to allow them to join us tonight.
I'll make a motion to allow both of those, them to join us from a remote location.
Thank you, Adam. Second, thank you, Shannon. I need council discussion. This will be a roll call vote. Amanda.
Shannon Derby.
Aye.
Doug Brand.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimalunas.
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Okay, thank you all for that. Welcome, Bill and Mark. Are the attorneys online, too?
Sean.
Sean, are you there? Just checking. Okay, gotcha. Okay, just want to make sure before we continue. We could skip over number five. We have no public hearing. To number six, input from the public. If you wish to address the council, please step up to the podium on your left, state your name and address for the record. Please be aware the council will not or cannot comment on anything that is said, but it will be referred back to city manager and staff for comment and further action. Input from the public. Seeing no one, we'll go on to number seven, council communications, letters and other communications from citizens. Anyone have anything? Yes, Adam?
I think we all got the one that has concerns about sidewalks on the south side and the inlet at 11th Street. I think Greg had forward that hopefully to Matt, our public works director.
Yes, we discussed it today. I don't recall if I copied counsel. I did respond to the gentleman.
Yep, I saw it and responded as well. Also, I think we all got the Arboretum email as well.
Who else? Council communications. Okay, seeing nothing else. I'm just thinking if I had one. Sorry. Oh, I don't. On to number eight, council reports from.
Actually, you know what? I had one more. Sorry. I also had someone contact me about Memorial Drive construction this summer and wondering about the traffic control to get in and out of businesses along Memorial Drive. I know I had Matt reach out to that individual with some information, and there wasn't a whole lot, because isn't there a meeting upcoming for that yet, Matt, is what you told me?
To be determined.
To be determined. So that, so that, that date is not out there yet. So if anyone else has concerns on Memorial Drive about ins and outs of their businesses, there will be some communication that's going to be given to you for when that meeting is to happen.
It was an information meeting, gosh, about a year and a half ago, but none, nobody was focused on the project then. Now it's staring us in the face. I think it's being bid out in February by DOT. So, yeah, really important, and we've urged DOT to do a follow-up presentation.
Perfect.
Because that's resurfacing the whole shebang from Manitowoc to the bridge on Washington Street and redecking the bridge. So, a big project. That's it, sorry.
Okay, no worries. Now, unless anyone has something else. Okay, now on to number eight, council reports from boards, commissions, and committees. Darla, go ahead.
For Main Street, the season is starting, and we're teaming up with a new business called Inky Blues, who's going to be very, very involved in, in art in general in the community. She is downtown. She's over by Rudy's Lanes, or what's it called now?
Hook.
Okay. And so she's over in that area. She's really, really good at what she does, and check her out because there are different things that they, that they will set up for people. Anyway, so we're, we're starting to get more involved with them. The big topic that we've been discussing, and is basically our input, is the Taco Bell. And we, just last week, we looked at, and this was before we were talking about, or talking with plan commission, we had found some things that design committee needed clarification, and I think some of those are pretty much incorporated into plan commission's requests. So that's going on. Other than that, I mean, we're going to have banner art. We're going to have, we're going to have the yarn bomb, which is, we have a lot of people who are signing up for that, and of course, have all of that with the flowers, and it's tremendous. And then with EAB, right now, we've got some things that are going to be going on. We just have to get to the point where it really happens, and then we can report on it. Otherwise, you know, we've been around for five years, and I think we've accomplished a lot of things. So I'm pretty happy with them.
Thank you. Anyone else? Adam, go ahead.
I advise you, Rec Board meeting met last week, and we did a, or Mike shared with us, from him and his staff, the park goals for 2025, which were very in-depth. They really did a really nice job, and looking to grow not only within themselves and as a team, but making sure that they're growing with programs. So they did a really nice job with that. We also talked about beach parking, so we're going to research some more information on that, hopefully get a presentation here in the future, and also got an update on the many programs that are going on right now with a lot of participation, which is very good to see. And also, once again, kudos to Mike in getting that DNR grant for everything that's going on at Nishoto. So that was another update and another positive step in our parks.
Adam, Bonnie?
Yeah, on the finance committee, we were, there's a new policy set in place about compensatory time. Sorry. An employee must use it, must, must use his comp time, cashed in, or lose it. And then we have a resolution tonight that we're asking the council to support about short-term rentals. We would, we recommend that the council pass it so that the city can see who pays their room taxes. This would be made possible if the various venues who collected the taxes would give the address of where this tax is to be applied. This is to help prevent double taxing of the same property, because it gives the city a chance to catch it, too, in case something like that happened. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? I do have one. The city manager recruitment and selection committee met back on January 9th. The notes are in our packet, but it was, I thought, a really good meeting with Kevin Bruner from PAA. Lots of information, lots of stuff that's going to be happening over the next few months. I think Greg and I are, could be like the contact, main contact people, where they're going to send us the information, and then we share it with the committee, but I'll also make sure to share it with everyone on council, so we all have the same information as we move forward. And that's all for that. Mark or Bill, do you have anything?
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing nothing else, we'll go on to number nine, city managers' report. Craig?
We don't have any invited guests tonight. This will turn to my report. We thank Jeff Dawson for venturing down to the harbor in the cold this morning. I always tell friends and relatives on the west Michigan side across the lake that we enjoy watching Lake Michigan create lake effect snow. I think they've got 12 to 18 inches in the forecast. So it might be cold here, but it's not cold with snow dumping on top of us. So, thank you. While we're talking about the weather briefly, we, of course, do advise people to use extreme caution outside. We are generally not shutting down operations due to the cold. We're scotties. It gets cold here. The senior center is closed tomorrow, and I think the schools are certainly want to be respectful of any vulnerable populations. This is not the time to be out if you have any health issues or, you know, for certain among us, and we'd all do well to look out for our neighbors if they need to run to the store or something. But as it stands right now, senior center is the only facility. Staff will be there, but they will not be open for meals or program offerings tomorrow. City Hall's open, Community House and Gym are open, Leicester Public Library open. So let's just hope this passes pretty soon. It's getting old.
Does that include meals on wheels as well?
Yes, ADRC is also not doing meals.
Okay, so ARDC is not doing meals, or is no meals on wheels either. Okay.
They pretty much follow the school closing schedule.
They follow the hours.
Yep. So thank you, Adam. Yes, no, no congregate meals, no meals on wheels until further notice, I'd say, with this weather. So that's, that's the weather. On the personnel front, there is, there has been a new police clerk and evidence technician hired, and that formal announcement will come shortly. I think both, well, Scott addressed the city manager selection committee. There's fairly extensive notes in your packets. Couple of ads of significance, and the ads and outreach activity would start in March. It was suggested, not finalized, that there be a target of late May for meeting with finalists and hopefully getting to a selection, identification of a preferred candidate. Strongly suggested by the consultants that the council look at maybe a Friday, Saturday, like the Friday and Saturday after Memorial Day are still in May this year, because May's early, and so candidates could be on Fri, in on Friday for community tours, possibly meetings with department heads, a community reception on Friday night was discussed, and then interviews and assessment center with council on Saturday. Not cast in stone, but that's a pretty common scheduling when you're bringing candidates in from various areas. Targeting July start date, which would allow for about four weeks overlap with the current incumbent, will be available after that to either be helpful or an unsolicited pain in the butt, which I promise not to be. City planner, community development director, we are having some dialogue with candidates, but are still accepting applications, and we are also accepting applications down at the water plant for a certified water operator, great career opportunity in, in that field. I would like to extend congratulations to police officer Alec Kessler, who recently was recognized with an award of valor related to his past employment as a Wisconsin conservation warden, chief commander. A man who grew up in Two Rivers and we're very happy to now have on our police department.
Yeah, sure. I think I announced it a while back when we hired Alec. He had previously worked for about five years with the Wisconsin DNR, the last two of which has been more in a non-sworn capacity, that being because of a violent attack back in 2022. So for the last couple of years, he's been recovering from that as it proceeded through the court system. With that being said, that court case finally came to a close, and after that conclusion, it was brought to everybody's attention that in 2022, while working up in Forest County, he had been on duty and had stopped a UTV for a violation. That operator violently attacked Alec, Alec Kessler. During that encounter, he was violently attacked, forcing him to save his own life. It forced him to shoot the offender to stop the threat. Afterwards, he then rendered aid to that subject and ultimately saved that person's life. With that, two Fridays ago, the Wisconsin chief conservation warden awarded for his heroic efforts in that encounter, the Valor Award from the state of Wisconsin, and also present for that award was the governor, Tony Evers, for the first time in, in I believe seven years for such an award to be delivered to a conservation warden. So with that, being that it was a lateral transfer as well, we also recognized a lateral award for Valor that he can probably wear and display on his uniform.
I think we've reported this previously, but to recap, we have five candidates whose names will appear on the ballot for the April 1 city council election. There are three at-large seats on the council that are up for election. The names in the order that they will appear on the ballot are Andre Robitaille, Tim Petrie, Jeff Dahlke, Scott Steckmesser, and Bill Leclerc. So I know there are arrangements being made, at least the Two Rivers Business Association has been in touch with city hall about reserving this room and making arrangements for televising and streaming a candidate forum. I've not heard from the legal women voters, but it's been common practice for them as well. Looks like Amanda's saying yes on that one. So very good. Next up is My Vote absentee ballots. I'll turn this over to our clerk to talk about, if you would.
Sure. So you can request absentee ballots at myvote.wi.gov, or you can call and we can mail you the forms. Unfortunately, you cannot drop them off in office until two weeks prior to an election. We will begin to mail ballots on Tuesday, January 28th. They will go out daily, Business Day, up until the Thursday before the election, which is February 13th. In-person absentee voting will start here on February 4th, and it will go until February 14th. It'll be done during regular business hours with the exception of the 14th. We'll be open till 5:00 PM.
Thank you, Amanda. And that, that is the only item on the, on that ballot is Department of Public Instruction superintendent.
Superintendent, yep.
Okay. Just a reminder, we haven't had a whole lot of this, but there has been some enforcement activity. Snow and ice must be removed from any public sidewalk within 24 hours from the time the snow ceases to fall. Would remind folks on corner lots, the ordinance specifically includes the ramps at the corner down to the gutter line. And we are, as, as a routine practice now, posting when the city believes the end of the snow event to be on Facebook and on the website, and advising that this marks the point from which property owners have 24 hours to do that. And folks, again, also a prohibition to shovel or blow snow into the street, and it's fine to put it on your neighbor's property with their permission, but if there's not permission, please don't do it, because it ends up with a phone call to the city and government gets involved, and it doesn't get any better. So those are a couple of caveats for the snow season in a town that's generally quite walkable. And the winter parking ban, we probably should remind folks out there again, but obviously it's not snowing, and enforcement of the ban remains on hold. It will only be enforced when there is, in the forecast or occurring. Sometimes here on the lake, it starts occurring before the forecast tells you it's gonna, but right now, in advance. Would like to have our tourism director, Joe Mattson, come forward. Council members have in front of you a couple of new publications, the Joint Tourism Guide, produced by Manitowoc and Two Rivers, and a wonderful hike, bike, and paddle piece from Explore Two Rivers. Joe can fill the end. They're both beautiful pieces. Well done.
Thanks, Greg. Appreciate it. So this is the time of year when we're getting ready to plan our trips, and hopefully a lot of people are planning their trips to come and visit us here on the lakeshore. The visitor guide for this year, we hope that it's well received. So far, it has been. You'll notice a big difference in the guide this year in that there's a lot more pictures. We decided that we wanted to capture as much lakeshore beauty as we possibly could and show that through our visitor guide. So lots of times visitor guides look much like a phone book. This doesn't read like a phone book. It reads more like a coffee table book, and that's by intent. So I do want to thank Visit Manitowoc, Visit Manitowoc, and the entire staff team there. They do an amazing job. They've been awesome to partner with. And this year as well, we did a shout out or a call out to people who had visited Manitowoc and Two Rivers, asked them if they had caught or captured any photos that they'd like to share with us. So we had a tremendous amount of collaboration from people who had come over the course of 2023 and a little bit of 2024, sharing their photos with us. And so it's great to have that kind of community support and support by people who have visited, and we recognize them in that document. This is available online as well. If you go to exploretworivers.com as well as print. And then there are two days at the end of January. There's a Tuesday and a Thursday. I will be at the Hamilton Wood Type and Printing Museum in the morning, and there's some later afternoon hours where if community members want to stop by, pick up a guide or a box of guides, they're more than welcome to do that as well. And then the second document is our new hike, bike, and paddle brochure. So the spotlight's a number of organizations within our community. When you open it up, there's a map that spotlights our various walking trails, hiking paths, and waterways. Want to give credit to Mike Mathis at Parks and Rec, Nancy Mayback at Woodland Dunes. Without those two helping me to put this together, it had been almost a mission impossible, and I probably would be talking to you about this at this time next year. So thank you for all the help that went into this. This is also available online in a digital format at exploretworivers.com. This is also available online in a digital format at exploretours.com. And we did create a new dropdown menu under things to do at the Explore website. So you'll be able to go there and not only see the digital map, if you want to print it off or use it via your phone, but then we do recognize with QR codes and links to our partners that are in this document as well.
Thank you, Joe. Good stuff. Feel free to share those if you need more on the way out the door, there's a stack over there on the table. Actually, our Parks Director, Mike Mathis, who come forward, another, another good news story with a grant in tandem with one of our local churches.
Hi, everyone. As you might know, we've been chasing some Inflation Reduction Act funding that came from the federal level for forestry for the last year or so. There's a large amount of money in that piece of legislature. And so one of the organizations that received some of that funding to then subaward was an organization called Faith in Place, and they're a national organization. But Grace Congregational Church, they have an earthworks ministry committee, and they brought it to my attention that this might be a good opportunity for us to work together on. So we put together a joint application, and we are going to receive just over $15,000 for this grant, and all of the money will go to Washington Park. We've had quite a few dead trees in Washington Park recently. We took out at least 15, probably more dead trees at Washington, and so we'll be able to plant 20 new trees at Washington Park. The other really cool piece of this is we will fund a forestry track youth apprentice. So that youth apprentice will work 450 hours for Parks and Rec this, this year, make $15 an hour, and then be working towards getting as much experience in forestry as possible. Covered a few other random expenses in terms of watering and a little bit of our staff time and seasonal staff time. So all in all, good effort, and they're gonna, the team over at Grace Congregational Church is gonna help volunteer and do some of the planting and do some community outreach events as a part of it as well.
Great engagement with the community. Thank you, Mike and your staff and the folks over at Grace Church. Things have pretty much come to a stop. I think these numbers are the same as what I presented last time. The contractor for the lead lateral, water lateral replacement remains on hold due to the cold weather conditions. So whenever spring arrives again, that work will resume in earnest. Similarly, we've seen some impact over at Sandy Bay Phase Three, where the contractor advanced construction from Green Bay was actually making pretty good progress. If you've driven over there, at least it's pretty smooth driving north on Orchard Lane and west for the length of Raleigh Court, the cul-de-sac. However, the contractor, the good news is they've completed all of the sanitary sewer mains and laterals, water mains and laterals, storm mains and laterals. And that's met to all of the lots? All, all 26. So that, that's a good portion of the underground infrastructure there. But given the frost is... How deep did you tell me today, Andrew? It's about... I'm calling to people that aren't there. That's, that should worry you. But we're about 30 inches into the ground, from what I understand, and it's going down fast. Pretty sworn Andrew is here. But so the contractor's opting not to continue with the road grading and gravelling until the weather warms up. Contractor will be doing the very rough excavation, probably in chunks, the way the ground is right now, of the stormwater management features, the dry pond and biofilters in coming weeks. Again, those are just going to get pretty much rough graded in this phase. The work to be bid out this year includes finishing up and planting those, those natural biofilter areas. I didn't really have an update on the marketing side, but I, I'll wing it. We do have one signed contract that's supposed to close yet this month for a lot on the Raleigh Court cul-de-sac site. That's at $74,900. And I've had conversations with a couple of area builders interested in securing contracts on lots for spec homes. So I, there's an exclusion to the listing contract with the Realtor for contracts entered into licensed contractors proposing spec homes if those lots are under contract by the end of January. So I expect, I'll mention this to our two council members, Scott Steckmesser and Shannon Derby that are on CDA, I'll probably be looking at a CDA meeting early next week. But good, strong interest. Val in my office handled a call today from a lady. We've heard from a couple of home builders that also have clients specifically looking at lots up there. So things are coming along. I know Brian Delman and his staff will be getting quotes on the electric work. We want to hit the ground running in the spring as soon as we return to good construction weather. I did want to share a brief report. This is not an exhaustive report on tax incremental financing in the city. I noted some recent social media posts on TIF districts. Just wanted to share a few things. This is very much a summary. The city currently has 12 active tax incremental districts. I noted a couple of comments about how much of the city was covered with TIF districts. Frankly, the statute doesn't pay a lot of attention to that, but in point of fact, those 12 TIF districts cover about 486 acres. That's about 12 and a half percent of the city's total land area. Two Rivers is a little over six square miles if you don't count the water, just the land. Nearly two-thirds of that acreage that is in TIF districts is made up of the two TIDs that were created for greenfield industrial development. The Eggers Industries now, I'm sorry, VT, thank you, I did it again. Eggers VT TID is 76.4 acres, and the Woodland Industrial Park TID is 230 acres. So, you know, right there is 305 acres out of the 486. So the other, the other non-industrial TIDs cover about 181 acres or 4.6% of the city's land area. The equalized value of the increment being captured by these tax incremental districts is $20, $24, $42.2 million. That's about 4.6% of the city's total equalized value. Now, you know, in fairness, we did note during budget time, some of our TIFs took, took a bit of a whack in terms of their relative share of equalized value because of the revaluation. That number was up around 7% of total equalized value tied up in our TIDs, but as of 2024, 4.6%. According to the Department of Revenue, the average for all Wisconsin municipalities is about 7.2%. The, the very relevant number we watch here as well is state law prohibits amending existing TIDs or creating new TIDs when the value of that captured increment exceeds 12% of equalized value. So we've got a fair amount of headroom of where we are right now at 4.6%. So hopefully those are, again, some pretty broad brush statistics. Hopefully they're helpful. Just again, to illustrate what are some of our TIF districts, and some of them have been on the books quite a while. TID number seven, the old hospital redevelopment TIF assisted with the renovation of the old portion of the Two Rivers Community Hospital into Northland Lodge. That was a white elephant property, a tax-exempt property that saw investment, oh gosh, that was back in the early 2000s. Some of this is old news, but that's a TIF that's still on the books. The city's obligation to assist the developer there has long since been paid off at $500,000 plus interest. The city did amend that plan, I want to say in the, I didn't note the date, but in the, prior to 2010, when we were getting ready for the reconstruction of Lincoln Avenue, the State Highway 42 Lincoln Avenue project, and the big item under that amendment was to have this TIF pay for neighborhood infrastructure within, within half a mile of the project boundaries. And it is paying the debt service on about $2 million in borrowing that was for the new water and sewer mains under Lincoln Avenue. The TID number nine, which was Eggers VT Industrial Development, solely for industrial development, and that obligation will run, I think, three or four more years until the end of that TIF district. That's been solely for assisting with what was better than a $20 million investment by Eggers about 20 years ago. Little out of order here, but TID number eight, Washington Highlands Redevelopment. Remember, that TIF was created after the voters of Two Rivers approved the new high school, after they approved a bond issue that had $0 to address the old high school and the redevelopment of that site. So that TIF had, was instrumental in assisting with the demolition of the old building with creation of the new Washington Park in the Football Bowl area. It has been since amended because that TIF financially was doing just fine, paying for the original purpose. Council approved an amendment that allowed expenditures within half mile of the, of the district boundaries, and additional activities funded have included a $400,000 grant to aid Riverside Foods with their expansion project. We're still making installments at $80,000 a year on that. And area infrastructure, notably water and sewer work. This one has funded some facade work as well. There were two facade grants approved by council last summer for a property on Jackson Street and for the element of the former Luigi's property. As of midsummer of last year, this TIF hit the end of the period where it can incur new obligations. It has five more years, though, to collect revenue and apply it to those obligations. TID number 12, and by the way, that's, was the construction of the addition at Riverside Foods when it was underway. That $400,000 grant assisted about an $8 million expansion project. TID number 12, you know pretty well, that was a downtown blight elimination TID, $750,000 in assistance driven by the new tax base created by the Cobblestone Hotel Development. That assisted with the removal and redevelopment of the old sitter hardware, which had been sitting empty and for sale for over five years, and some residential properties that were in pretty rough shape along Jefferson Street. That project is not only doing fine, but that TIF has also been amended to include items such as the assistance for the Violet Inn project and for Sophie's expansion. Those were approved by city council last fall. Over on the east side, TID number 11 was created to assist with redevelopment of St. Peter the Fisherman School. That was another tax-exempt white elephant vacated by the public schools because of declining enrollment, taken over by Two Rivers Catholic Schools as St. Peter the Fisherman School, ultimately declining enrollment took its toll there. Not sitting empty, not off the tax base anymore. Ginton invested about $1 million there, aided with a $200,000 city pay-as-you-go grant paid from the new taxes created. That, as you know, last, you may recall, last year, we made the last payment under that agreement with $200,000 plus 5% interest. The original plan for that TIF does allow for improvements at Vietnam Veterans Park. We're doing a little bit of that in this year's budget for aid to redevelopment along Lincoln Avenue. Haven't had that happen yet. Our assistance has been redevelopment and for neighborhood infrastructure work. TID number 14, out of the Woodland Industrial Park, is basically funding for infrastructure and aid to business development. So far, the council has approved TID number 14 grants, again, on a pay-as-you-go basis, based on tax base they create to all energy management, local young man that learned about wind energy at LTC and in, and in the field and built a new building in Two Rivers, and Braun, Braun Building's new trust plant that has been erected just this past year up there. Yes, I would certainly acknowledge the city has some tax incremental plans that have had setbacks, but they do remain available to assist with redevelopment of some priority sites. They include, I call it Lucky 13, with tongue-in-cheek, the downtown area TIF that was created initially to assist with the proposed Culvers Development at 22nd and Washington. That didn't happen, much to all of our chagrin, but that district is still in place. It does not include the Quick Trip, but includes the block immediately west across Washington Street and two blocks south on either side of Washington. That has done a little bit of funding for facade grants as authorized by council, but remains available with about 15 years left in its life to assist redevelopment in an area that could still see some commercial investment. TID 15 on Forest Avenue, we're all hopeful. That's the old Hanson and Flores property. It's been a priority redevelopment site since 2010, at least, in the 2010 comp plant. There is a development proposal out there now that was recently given zoning approval. We hope to see that move ahead for some market rate apartment housing. Couple where we, we swung, swung in, the projects missed at least, so far include the former Eggers downtown site, the one highlighted in sort of a yellow-green there that is three and a half acres owned by the city. Got some, had discussions with the developer, still have high hopes for some downtown waterfront residential development there, and similar, the, the Eggers West site. So not going to say that we've swung and hit a home run every time, but in terms of their impact, the amount of taxes they're capturing, it's not, if you assume these developments would have happened without TIF, and I, I don't think that's the case, each of them had to pass the BUT4 test, it still amounts to 4.6% of total equalized value. And in many cases, involving formerly tax-exempt sites that were not producing anything or blighted sites that, that needed work. So I know that's not the whole story. There's lots of numbers and stats relative to TIF, but it's the most significant development tool that Wisconsin cities have available to them, and I'd argue the cities made good use of that tool. Moving on, upcoming events, Coffee with a Cop, the police department continues their outreach activities. Next one is next Monday, the 27th, over at High Lift Coffee Shop at 8:30. Then on Wednesday, February 5th, at the Senior Center at 10:00 AM. Public is welcome, that's the whole point. Get out, interact with our Two Rivers Police Department, learn more about the department's operations, share any questions or concerns you might have as a resident in the city. Parks and Rec has Zumba classes on Wednesdays, January 22nd through March 5th, March, yeah, excuse me, March 5th evenings over at the Community House. Reach out to Kenny Schillcox or call the number there if you have questions on that. I'm going to invite Matt, our Public Works Director, City Engineer, up for the next one, because we do, as you, as you know, have a capital project planned with street reconstruction of about three blocks on the side this year. This is driven primarily by undersized water mains in that area. The streets are also in need of reconstruction, might get rid of a lead lateral or two in the process. With that, over to Matt.
Frank said it all, so.
There's a lot more to this.
Oh, okay. On January 30th, we are going to hold a public informational meeting to meet with the property owners on Harbor, a portion of 16th and a portion of Emmett, all south of 17th Street. And it's primarily to go over the scope of the project, so it'll be new underground utilities, storm, water, and sanitary. And then also take a look at the pavement. Primarily, the project is going to be all new concrete pavement. Right now, there's some asphalt mixed in. And then in 2013, the city approved a bike accommodation plan, and part of that plan has identified coming down East Street over to Harbor, Harbor up to 16th as a on-street bike accommodation. Couple meetings ago, there was a gentleman that came in asking about wider accommodations for pedestrian and biking, and so we're taking a look at that as a public works committee. And alternates for Harbor Street have included keeping the same width of roadway, so basically 24 feet in width, and only have parking on one side, possibly looking at making that a one-way street. So continuing the one-way directional that is on East Street to Harbor up the Peleon Court, and then continue that one-way up to 16th Street. If we do that, we may look at adding a 10-foot wide multi-use path on the south side. And so we're separating the traffic and the pedestrians. You cannot have the on-street bicycling and cars going in opposite direction, so you have to take the bike and pedestrian accommodations and separate them off the road. So we could take a look at a two-way traffic pattern and widen the road out to 28 feet. So there's... So there's a lot of options that we're going to present to the property owners out there, get their input and ultimately finalize our plans and move forward. So everybody is welcome, January 30th, 5 to 6:30. We'll do a formal presentation at 5:30 and we'll also then talk about assessments and potential financial impacts that will have on the property owners as well.
Thank you, Matt. That's about a $1.6 million project in total on my call. Kind of all working that, not get out yet, budgeted at that. Thank you. Other upcoming events in the community, the Knights Columbus Cornhole Tournament, February 1st over at the Community House Gym. The Two Rivers Historical Society First Ever Polka Bowl over at sepia chapel. That includes some great music by Amy Potoff, The Mystic, The Mystic Moods and Copper Box. So even if you can't polka worth a darn, or maybe your grandma used to drag you around the floor at wedding receptions, you can still come and watch and have a beer and be entertained with some great music or not have a beer. The Two Rivers Business Association is doing a comedy night, their second annual fundraising night. That's over at sepia chapel, Saturday, February 8th. TRBA partners with the city and community groups and a lot of good things. Two Rivers and that is, I see, co-sponsored by C-HA for News, TRBA fundraiser. And that is it. On these cold nights, there's a beautiful view as the sun goes down over Central Park. That's all I have for my report. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
No legislative update because they'll soon be back in session and we'll be watching with interest the budget process and some other things.
On to number 10, the consent agenda, agenda. Under A, we have presentation of minutes from the city council regular meeting, January 6, 2025. The recommended action will be a motion to waive reading and adopt the minutes. Under B, we have minutes of meetings. We have personnel and finance committee from October 25th and 29th, 2024, and January 9th, 2025. We have the library board from December 10th, 2024. Environmental Advisory Board from December 17th, 2024. Room Tax Commission from December 30th, 2024. Public Utilities Committee, January 6, 2025. Public Works Committee, January 8th, 2025. Advisory Recreation Board from January 8th, 2025. City Manager Recruitment and Selection Committee from January 9th, 2025. And Plan Commission from January 13th, 2025. The recommended action will be a motion to receive and file. Under C, Board and Committee Recommendations Requiring Council Action. We have one of those is from the Plan Commission from January 13th, 2025, to set a public hearing on application for a conditional use permit application for Taco Bell with drive-through at Washington Street. The recommended action will be a motion to set the public hearing for Monday, February 3rd, 2025 at 6 o'clock PM. Under D, we have Department Reports for December 2024. We have City Clerk.
President, if I might on that, I'm sorry, they didn't come in on time, so not with this agenda are the fire and police reports listed.
Okay.
Sorry to interrupt you.
Nope, that's fine.
Next time for those.
Okay, so we have City Clerk, Electric, skipping over Fire, Insurance, libraries, Park and Recreation, No Police, Public Works, Safety, Water and Tourism. The recommended action will be a motion to receive and file. Under E, we have applications and petitions. There's one of those, an application for appointment of agent change for Ultra Mart Foods LLC DBA Pick and Save. Recommended action is a motion to approve the application and authorize assurance of the license. The recommended action for the consent agenda is a motion to approve the consent agenda with the various actions recommended. Looking for that motion. Thank you, Shannon. Second by Doug. Any council discussion?
President.
Yes.
I just want to make a comment. The minutes for January 13th, the planning commission meeting, the developer acknowledged that right turn only on Washington Street would not be a problem for that business Taco Bell. And I didn't see that in a note that they just want to make everyone aware of that.
Okay.
I do think we may have some more discussion about that right, right turn versus right or left restriction when that is in front of the council following the public hearing.
I do want to note that the same thing, kind of what Mark says about the Plan Commission from January 13th, it has information in there about the Taco Bell drive-through and how the developer changed some things based on Plan Commission's recommendations. So if anyone has questions about that, that's a good place to go look and see what was talked about and.
And just as a reminder, right, maybe later on the agenda, the Plan Commission is going to meet again this week, Wednesday, 5:30 PM for a special meeting. That actually to review the revised site plan, which will reflect the changes, should reflect the changes that you saw in the minutes there. Thank you.
Anything else? See none. This will be a roll call vote. No, sorry, all in favor. So all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone opposed? Motion carried. On to number 11, city council formal item. Under A, we have resolution upon retirement for Lisa Kuhn. The recommended action will be a motion to read and adopt the resolution.
I will make a motion to read and adopt the resolution.
Thank you, Adam. Looking for a second by Bonnie. Any council discussion? See none. This will be a roll call vote.
Doug Brand.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimalunas.
Aye.
Scott Steckmuster.
Aye.
Adam Mahusky.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Shannon Derby.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
All in favor.
All yours, Greg.
I would just note too, before I read this, Lisa was in today because she was volunteering and assisting Joe Metzen with some of the, the Two Rivers swag inventory and assembling some information packets for an upcoming activity.
From the Campos or the State Park?
Very good. For the Camp, for the Campos, State Park, some nice, nice work. So that's, that's indicative of what we say in this resolution. So resolution upon retirement, Lisa Keen, Administrative Assistant City Manager and Deputy City Clerk. Whereas Lisa Keen began her employment with the city of Two Rivers on March 27, 2017 as Executive Administrative Assistant to City Manager and Deputy City Clerk, coming from a position in the Manitowoc Clerk's office. And whereas Lisa retired from her service to the city of Two Rivers on November 8, 2024. And whereas during her more than seven and a half years of service to the citizens of Two Rivers, Lisa was a trusted and respected member of the city's management team and provided important support services for the work of the city council and the city's citizen boards, commissions and committees. And whereas Ms. Keen in her role as Deputy City Clerk also provided valuable support services to the city clerk and the voters of Two Rivers, assisting in the conducting of all elections and working closely with the city clerk to implement and communicate with the public regarding many changes in election law, to recruit and retain the city's election workers and to implement new technologies. And whereas during her tenure with the city, Ms. Keen's accomplishments included taking the lead in revamping the city website and creation of the Explore Two Rivers website and calendar, overseeing a recodification project and making municipal code available online, supporting city marketing and branding efforts, taking charge of merchandise selection, ordering inventory and accounts receivable for Two Rivers logo, logo wear, excuse me, coordinating several major initiatives and activities for the city and in the process demonstrating enthusiasm and pride in Two Rivers and went well beyond the requirements of her job description. Such initiatives included the annual employee picnic, celebrate Two Rivers events, Two Rivers Domashlitsa Sister Cities activities, promotion and fundraising for the downtown Christmas decorations, promotion and fundraising for Central Park West project and planning and implementing the first and second annual Cool City Christmases. There were many hands that made those happen, but Lisa really was the quarterback on that and really enthusiastically promoted and organized and goaded and did what she needed to do for people to make that happen. And whereas throughout her tenure with the city, Ms. Keen treated residents and those doing business with the city with the utmost professionalism and respect, serving as an effective and personable goodwill ambassador for the city manager's office and the entire city organization. And whereas her willingness to tackle new projects, embrace and implement new technology and always promote the city of Two Rivers warrant special recognition upon her retirement, even if I'm about a month late getting this to you. Now therefore be it resolved that city council of the city of Two Rivers is hereby extend a sincere thank you to Lisa Keen for her service to our city government and the community that it serves and is hereby acknowledge her many contributions to the organization and community during her dedicated service to our city, March 27, 2017 to November 8, 2024. Be it further resolved, this resolution be forwarded to Ms. Keen in token of the city councils and city managers appreciation for her job well done, along with best wishes for her retirement. That's dated this 20th day of January. We did prepare this one for signature by full council and the clerk and manager. So if you can make sure to sign it before leaving tonight, we much appreciate it. So, thank you.
Congratulations, Lisa, again.
I would ask that the council table item B, the professional services agreement with Stan Tech. I'm still waiting for some final revisions on that contract and I expected that I would have it so we could have gotten it out over the weekend. I do anticipate putting it on next Monday's work session agenda. This is for a fully grant funded project, a major shoreline, planning for resilient waterfront from the south pier all the way past the city limits to the extent of the city-owned property down by the Chamber of Commerce. We've worked hand in hand with Stan Tech as they've assisted in these applications. And we do need to get that signed so we can get that underway. All of the funding is in place for that, so.
So we'll skip over that.
If you would.
Yep.
Perhaps a motion to table to the 27th.
Okay.
If you would.
Looking for a motion to table. Thank you, Doug. Second by Shannon. Any council discussion? See none. This will be a roll call vote. Amanda.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimalunas.
Aye.
Scott Steckmuster.
Aye.
Adam Mahusky.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Shannon Derby.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Doug Brand.
Aye.
All in favor.
Okay, on to C, First Amendment to Real Estate Purchase Option Agreement with Hawk Energy Storage LLC Regarding Possible Purchase of Property at Woodland Industrial Park for Battery Energy Storage System, BES facility. Greg.
This is the latest action requested of the city council and kind of a, a long and ongoing proposed project for out at the industrial park. I'll try to summarize from the memo that's in your packets. And then I will also be referencing a handout, which is intended to be the final markup of a revised section 13 of the agreement. And that's in front of each of you and it was emailed out this afternoon to the council members that are, and to the city attorney that are joining us by phone. Hawk Energy Storage is the entity that currently holds an option to purchase about a nine and a half acre parcel at the Woodland Industrial Park, where they've proposed and are pursuing approvals for a proposed grid scale battery energy storage facility. That current option is for a four-year term. They entered into it in early 2021, the fourth year, the term of the current agreement. It expires in July of this year. The folks that have been acting as agents for this project, Tanaska, which is an Omaha, Nebraska-based energy and engineering company, contacted my office in November indicating they wanted to request a four-year extension of the option. They propose an adjustment of the annual amount to be paid as an option fee and we'll talk about that in a minute. As to why the extension to the option is being requested, Tanaska did provide a memo that dates back to November that cites the reason they've withdrawn the proposed Two Rivers project this, this fall from the queue or the lineup of projects being considered by the regional electric grid operator, MISO, or the Mid-Continent Independent System Operator, about why they plan to submit a new application. And what it came down to when, when you referenced the memo, Tanaska and Hawk Energy, based on their phase one review of their project, anticipated, I'm recalling, $9 million in what I call make ready costs out on in the grid, things that needed to be done to accommodate this energy storage facility if it's built. By the way, they've discussed it being 150 megawatts, 600 megawatt hours of, of power. So however, as noted in this memo from Tanaska, the Hawk Energy Storage Project experienced an unexpected increase of approximately $32 million in network upgrade costs from MISO as they did their phase two feasibility study. That was a lot more than they'd expected in, in system costs. So they did withdraw the request for connection. Now, at the time, they were also mindful that MISO was looking at a major investment in the grid infrastructure serving the central part of the country that, that's in MISO's service area. And that so-called long-range transmission planning project would, would involve considerable investment in the distribution infrastructure that would eliminate the need for some of the upgrades that would otherwise have fallen on the Hawk Energy project. That's at least my layman's understanding of it. So the company's asking for a four-year extension. They tell me they intend to get back in the queue for consideration, but this is obviously going to set the project back by two or three years, I would say. Because when they met with council earlier this year for, I'm sorry, last year, for the conditional use permit to be considered, there was discussion of this possibly being a 2025 construction project. Not the case anymore. As far as the option being paid to the city, they've been paying $47,000 per year for the option to purchase that nine and a half acres out at the industrial park. They are proposing to increase that to $55,000 annually with a payment due, first payment due in July. That annual option fee would increase by $1,500 each of the following years. And ultimately, unless they exercise it expiring in July of 2028. Now, there is a provision in the option agreement, the original option agreement, that if they exercise the option, the most recent annual option fee applies against the purchase price, but it's only the most recent payment. And that purchase price is at the current $11,000 per acre, which is the city's charge for land out at the park. So that's, that's the gist of their proposal. But I did, because of the amount of time that's passed, almost four years since first entering into the option, I did ask outside council at the Boardman and Clark Firm in Madison that does a lot of public utility work for our energy supplier and for other Wisconsin munis to take a look at the existing option agreement, particularly on two things. Question was, has anything changed regarding state law or public service commission regs on taxation of energy storage? Because that seemed it was a little up in the air four years ago. The report I got back was that the law on that hasn't changed. That's specific to battery energy storage. Also, Boardman took a look at the payment in lieu of taxes and minimum annual payment section, that is section 13 of the agreement. That's the next thing I'll, I'll want to turn to. And then I'm not going to go through all this, but on page 83 of the packet, second page of my memo, I did give a chronology of events as far as this, this project, the original option, the conditional use permit granted last February at city council after recommendation by the Plan Commission. I'm sorry, approved Plan Commission review last February, city council approval in March. City council then in June did authorize assignment of the purchase option from Swift Energy LLC to Hawk Energy Storage LLC. In July of last year, the Business Industrial Development Committee and CDA approved site and architectural plans for the best project. And then this communication from November. You remember most of that, but it might be helpful to the, to the public out there. And oh, I did include at least one article here on the decision by MISO to make this major investment in the regional infrastructure. So what I'm asking for tonight is for council authorization for the city manager and city clerk to sign an amendment to the option to purchase property with both changes, but also with modifications to section 13 of the agreement titled payment in lieu of taxes and minimum annual payment. That markup is in front of you. Deletions are shown in red, additions are shown in blue. I'll try to highlight, and I will note this, this got the green light from the attorneys at Boardman this afternoon and it's also acceptable to the folks at Tanaska and they're, they're working with Michael Best and Friedrich on as far as who handled the review at their end. The reference to. The reference to personal property is deleted because of personal property now being exempt from property taxes. The definition of real property now references Wisconsin statutes as amended since the original agreement. That's why the reference to Section 70.03 of 2023-24. To be consistent with the rest of the agreement, they caught that we were terming in the original agreement the city as owner, not city. So that's just a pretty basic change in semantics there. City of Two Rivers is identified as owner in the preamble to the agreement. And let's see, if a portion in the amount that the city would have received if the property becomes exempt or would have instead of would have had been subject to property tax. Again, the reference to owner versus city. What we basically say in here is we right now assume this will be taxable. If it is, we expect that it would be based on valuation and the tax rate applicable to the city. We also provide, though, that there would be a minimum annual revenue amount of $150,000. That's as of 2021. It's to be, it's to increase based on CPI urban each year. And, sorry, the folks at Tanaska did want to add the paragraph in blue you see here at the end of 13A, provided, however, the pilot payment due in any given year shall be reduced but not below zero by any amount of public utility distribution provided by the state. In theory, if this was deemed to fall under utility taxes, the state would collect a tax and return some shared revenue to the city. It'd be a heck of a lot less than $150,000. But this is meant to say, to the extent the city would get any money back from the state if this was considered utility property, that would be netted out against the minimum payment required.
But only to what we get back as a city, not what's paid to the state in gross?
Correct. Correct. By, reduced by the amount of any public utility distribution received by the owner, which would be the city.
Yes.
Yeah. During such year. Sorry, I've read this, but. And then Paragraph B, should the sums payable to the owner, which is the city, under this section, I had asked, and the attorneys agreed it should be under this Section 13, so nobody thinks it's just 13B, in connection with the property, including improvements that constitute real property as defined in current statutes. Now, this is whether payable by any combination of one or more of property tax, pilot payments, or public utility distribution payments. If that totals less than $150,000 in any year, the developer will make a payment to the owner, the city, in the amount needed to increase the total amount due for a year to $150,000, which is here and after referred to as the minimum annual payment. It goes on, and of course, what's in black and white is existing language, noting again, the minimum annual payment should be increased or decreased because sometimes you have deflation, not very often, but increased or decreased each year based on CPI urban. And in no event shall the minimum annual payments be less than $150,000. And then the final change, which came at the request of Boardman and Clark, was that we add the term utility scale or commercial battery storage facility, because utility scale facility is a term of art out in the energy industry. And Boardman thought it was important to not just have the language we do now that references a commercial battery storage facility, but utility scale or commercial battery storage facility. So that happens there in the last paragraph of Sub B, and likewise happens in Sub C. I apologize for handing this out at the meeting, but I understand from Tanaska they want to get this project back in the queue because there will at some point be a cutoff coming where MISO won't accept more applications. This was blessed this afternoon by the attorneys at Boardman. The other side of the table is fine with it. I am going to ask our consulting attorneys to make sure when this is incorporated into the agreement that, I want to double check that the language meshes with this. So this would be approval of the amendment, First Amendment to the Real Estate Purchase Option Agreement as presented in your packet, however, with the addition of modifications to Section 13 as presented tonight. And it would also be authorization to sign the memorandum of agreement, First Amendment to memorandum of agreement, which is what gets recorded with the Register of Deeds to memorialize this agreement. And that likewise would need to be amended from what's in front of you to include this, if that makes sense. So, city attorney, tell me if I got it wrong there, but as far as the sequence, authorize city manager and city clerk to execute the First Amendment to Real Estate Option Agreement and First Amendment to Memorandum of Real Estate Purchase Option Agreement as presented, but with the addition of the stated amendment to Section 13, which will go in each of those documents.
Gotcha.
Pardon the long-winded explanation, but this is a big deal if it happens. Of course, while I'll be interested to see what new policies and new administration in Washington will have as far as energy and energy storage like this project. But undoubtedly, you know, like we've talked about, the interest here is, this is right next to the Shoto substation. It's a key piece of distribution infrastructure right next door. The developers secured easements to get from the industrial park to the Shoto sub. And we have a fair amount already of alternative electric generation in the area with two big solar farms up by the nuclear plant. Thanks.
So then we're looking for that motion that Greg had stated.
I'm in.
Sorry, I saw Bonnie first, and I heard Darla second. Any council discussion? Yes, Adam?
Has there been any interest in that lot since this agreement started, do you know?
No.
Okay. Okay.
You're right, because we're not blessed with a huge number of lots out there, and this is a nice piece of property. No, there have not been any inquiries.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, Darla?
So right now, they're saying they want an extension of three years?
Four years.
Four years.
Yep.
Okay, so we have that property sitting there. What if somebody comes by who's, let's say, cash in hand, and they really want it? What do we do if the other, you know, Hawk is vague? But then we have somebody come along who could actually?
Right now, an option ties up that property.
Okay.
You know, we do have, we don't have a lot this large ready to roll on the south side of 310. We have five acres that actually fronts on Woodland. We have the ability to develop more infrastructure south off of Brown's Drive. It would take, it would take some work, but I think we could, we'd be back in front of council and be mobilizing resources in a hurry. It is a trade-off with the option. And obviously, we have an industrial park for more reasons other than revenue, but $55,000 a year. It would take a pretty good development on that lot to nap the city $55,000 in taxes. But obviously, again, it's not providing anybody with jobs. It's not consuming any utilities right now. The upside potential of this, if it happens, is significant, as we've discussed, especially the revenue. It is an annual payment by Hawk Energy. So I'm assuming if for some reason they become less enthusiastic about their project, you know, they've got the right for four years, but I'm not sure they just throw $55,000 or $56,500 next year at keeping property they didn't think they'd develop.
Is he back out before the four years is up?
They could. It's an, I believe, yeah, it's an annual payment, so if they were.
Okay.
I don't have it in front of me.
If they decide or if they come to the conclusion that this operation is not going to work, then at least we can get it back and we can?
All right. We could certainly, by mutual agreement, terminate the arrangement. What I'm not recalling, if they simply by not making a payment, obviously, we would argue they don't have the right anymore, but I don't recall the specific language on that.
Okay. What is the cost per acre? It's 9.4 acres?
It's cheap. Our longstanding pricing out there has been $11,000 per acre.
The option is considerably more, their payment.
At the time, at the time, we came up with $47,000 by saying, what's the amount of taxes being paid per acre on developed sites out at the industrial park? And that's where that $47,000 as a proxy came up.
Anyone else? Okay. Seeing no one else, this will be a roll call vote. Amanda?
Bonnie Schimmelunis?
Aye.
Scott Steckmuster?
Aye.
Adam Mahusky?
Aye.
Darla Leclerc?
Aye.
Mark Bitner?
Aye.
Shannon Derby?
Aye.
Bill Leclerc?
Aye.
Doug Brand?
Aye.
Tim Petrie?
Aye.
All in favor.
Thank you all for that. On to D, Ordinance Amending Section 2-1-5B, III of the Code of Ordinances to Allow the City Council to Designate by Resolution Alternate Locations for Central Count for Elections.
Just to give it a little context, we thought we were going to have a special meeting last Monday that you all were called to that ended up canceling because we had reason to believe the long-awaited elevator rehab project would happen and would create a problem for Central Count in the February primary. Well, there's still one part. The elevator company is waiting on and waiting on, and we're not going to target shutting down access until they have all the parts. So it wasn't necessary to have the enabling ordinance and the resolution in follow-up to move Central Count out of City Hall because it meets in this third-floor room for the February primary. However, and probably won't be necessary for the April election because honestly, I think we're better off just waiting until after that. But it did certainly occur to the city clerk and the rest of us that, you know what, in the event we run into this need in the future, for some reason, City Hall's not available for Central Count, let's at least get an ordinance on the books where the city council could still make that change with proper notice by resolution in the future. So that's why the ordinance sits in front of you. Amanda can speak too. I know there, even then, the state has some advanced notice requirements. The city just doesn't decide in the middle of the night that, hey, tomorrow Central Count got moved and we rented a pool hall somewhere. I'm being sarcastic. Excuse me. Set them straight, Amanda. I led them astray there.
We don't have a pool hall.
So, yeah, the state requires, I don't know the amount of days off the top of my head, but for like the February election, we would have had to make the change by this past Sunday. So that's why there was the possibility of that special council meeting. But after speaking with the elevator company, and they said it probably won't happen before February, that's why we canceled that meeting. But changing the ordinance to allow us to move location by resolution will help us in the future if we'd ever need to do that.
So then we are looking for a motion to read and adopt the ordinance. I heard Bill first and then Mark. Thank you. Any council discussion? Seeing none, we'll do another roll call vote. Amanda?
Scott Steckmuster?
Aye.
Adam Mahusky?
Aye.
Darla Leclerc?
Aye.
Mark Bitner?
Aye.
Shannon Derby?
Aye.
Bill Leclerc?
Aye.
Doug Brand?
Aye.
Tim Petrie?
Aye.
Bonnie Schimmelunis?
Aye.
All in favor.
Okay, on to E, Resolution urging state legislation to require online booking platforms to provide more detailed information on room taxes collected in and remitted to the city.
So this came about as a result of the council's recent experience with staffs with the situation where a local owner and manager of multiple short-term rental properties came to realize that even though five, six years ago, the online platforms started collecting from people who book their short-term rentals through the online platforms and remitting those dollars, in this case, our 8% city room tax to the city, that individual had continued to do so as well. And our finance department staff looked over the submittals that included some detail from the online platforms, determined that a refund was indeed due, and the council authorized it. But along the way, it highlighted a pretty big flaw in the statute, and that is, it's been there right along, that those online platforms are not required to tell the city or any city in Wisconsin where the money was collected. So we get over $100,000 a year now in room taxes collected through the online platforms. That's almost all, if not all, for vacation rentals. And it just comes in quarterly checks with no subsidiary detail. Now, something tells me those entities with a couple of keystrokes could generate probably, you know, what size socks you wear. But they are not required, and it, as this resolution notes, it can lead to problems such as duplicate payments, which the city can't ascertain. It would also help with making sure that every entity out there that is providing short-term rentals and having room taxes collected on their behalf is properly licensed with the county and the city. Might help the city with tracking trends in tourism-related lodging in the community. And understand, even when we do know where the room taxes come from, like with our hotels' monthly payments, there are protections in the law that protect confidentiality as to, you know, what are the gross receipts of your hotel this month versus somebody else's. So it just seems to make sense in a lot of ways. I'll defer. This came as a recommendation. I think Adam made the motion, and Mark may have seconded at the Finance Committee as Bonnie referenced. But the intent is that staff get this disseminated to our legislators, to the governor's office, and encourage the Room Tax Commission and Explore Two Rivers to likewise pursue this amendment. I did talk today to our former state senator, you know, the district boundaries changed, so Andre Jacques is no longer our senator, but he was pretty actively involved in the initial legislation on this and certainly indicated he understood the situation, encouraged us to try to work through the League of Municipalities and other, you know, joint action entities to pursue it. Clearly, I'll also follow up with Senator Lemahoo and Paul Tittle, our current state reps. This is meant to sort of be a shout-out from their constituents here in Two Rivers that we could just do a whole lot better. These numbers are too significant to just do it in the blind and not even know what properties they're coming from. So that's what's in front of you.
Okay. So we're looking for a motion to read and adopt as recommended by the Personnel and Finance Committee. Thank you, Darla. Second by? Thank you, Bonnie. Any council discussion? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote. Amanda?
Adam Mahusky?
Aye.
Darla Leclerc?
Aye.
Mark Bitner?
Aye.
Shannon Derby?
Aye.
Bill Leclerc? Bill, are you there? Doug Brand?
Aye.
Tim Petrie?
Aye.
Bonnie Schimmelunis?
Aye.
Scott Steckmuster?
Aye.
Bill?
Is that an aye or?
Aye.
There it is.
All in favor.
Okay. Do you want to read the resolution?
I don't know why I put read on there. It might be a good idea. If you can stomach it, I'll read it. Resolution in support of legislation to require greater reporting detail from online booking platforms for room taxes collected on behalf of Wisconsin municipalities, whereas booking platforms at the online marketplace are the preferred method for reserving hotels, vacation rentals, and other lodging for a majority of American travelers. And whereas payments are usually made through the online platforms for bookings of short-term vacation rentals, which are a strong growth sector. of short-term vacation rentals, which are a strong growth sector in travel lodging in recent years, and whereas this trend is evident here in Two Rivers, where the twenty-twenty-four, where in twenty-twenty-four, the room taxes collected and remitted to the city from the online marketplace, kind of for more than a third of total room tax revenues, and whereas while state law requires online booking platforms to collect such room taxes for bookings in municipalities that levy a room tax and to remit such taxes to the city on a quarterly basis, the platforms are not required to identify the properties from which the room taxes are generated, nor the amount of room tax attributable to each such property. And whereas having such information would be beneficial to municipalities and to the local tourism promotion and development activities funded through room taxes by aiding the city and assuring that all vacation rentals are properly licensed and otherwise operating in compliance with state and local regulations, helping assure that room tax revenues are being accurately reported and accounting for, accounted for, excuse me, avoiding both under collection and the possibility of duplicate payments made in error by both the rental property and the booking platform, that's what we ran into just recently, and then making it easier to analyze and evaluate trends in local lodging. And whereas such information should be readily available to and reportable by those platforms, but legislative action is required to change the current reporting requirements. Now, therefore, be it resolved, city council does hereby urge the Wisconsin Legislature to consider legislation amending state law pertaining to the collection and payment of room taxes by online marketplace platforms to require additional details, including the names and addresses. We'll correct that before this goes out in the mail, instead of address, of properties from which room taxes are collected and paid to the municipality, and the amount of room tax paid from each such property that is included in any quarterly payment to the municipality. And be it further resolved, City of Two Rivers seeks expressions of support for such legislation from the city's Room Tax Commission and the Board of Directors of the Board of Two Rivers, Inc., and other area room tax commissions and tourism entities. And be it further resolved, the cops of this resolution be provided to our area legislators, State Representative Paul Tittle, Senator Devin Lemahue, to Governor Tony Evers, the Wisconsin Department of Tourism, and state tourism organizations, urging their support for such a common sense change. I always like those common sense changes in state law, adopted this twentieth day of January twenty-twenty-five, and I can assure you, our tourism director, also Joe Metzen, will will go forth and help spread the word on this in the tourism organizations.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, committee. Hold on.
On to number twelve, for information only. You got it, or you want me to?
If you want to walk through that, that's fine, Mr. President.
Absolutely. So, there, next Monday, we have a city council work session on Monday, January twenty-seventh at six o'clock. And then, the next meeting, city council regular meeting, is Monday, February third at six, then the city council regular meeting on Monday, February seventeenth at six o'clock, and our first council listening session, Wednesday, February nineteenth, six o'clock, at the Lester Public Library by the fireplace. So, hopefully, it'll be cold and chilly, and people will want to come and sit, but then they may not come, so.
Nice, cozy, and informal setting. Great place for discussion. Next Monday's meeting will include, among other things, discussion of the city's short-term regulations relative to short-term rentals, staff report back on that. I expect it will have that proposed STAN-TAC agreement relating to creating a resilient shoreline. Closed session, possibly regarding a an insurance claim matter and a possible litigation, not a big litigation, but possible litigation. Also, the communication that was referenced earlier that had come from the arboretum would be inappropriate. I vetted this with the attorneys, inappropriate discussion in closed as well. So.
Any closed session for tonight?
No closed session necessary for tonight.
Okay. Then, we're looking for motion to adjourn.
Make the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Adam. Second by Shannon. Any council discussion? Seeing none, this will be a all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you all, and good night.